This is the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, the which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's the monthly test. Folks don't get excited. All right, we need to, uh, roll call.
Christie?
Here.
Crowner?
Here.
Or Hyatt Meyer?
Here.
Please?
Here.
Waterman?
Here.
Need to perfect and approve the agenda.
So move.
Support. Motionless support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Hyatt Meyer?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Consent agenda.
Motion approved is presented.
Support.
Motion with support to approve consent agenda items one through eight, which are in the minutes from regular city council meeting. Uh, approve cigarette permit renewals for Casey's MK mini mart, Highway 34 truck stop, Westland Fast Break and Murphy Oil. Approve a renewal for Bit Defender Softway for the IT department. Approve payment Lynch Dallas PC for legal services. Uh, approve payment to Greater Burlington Partnership for the hotel motel tax. Uh, approve payment Dave Bazzin Electric, approve payment to Brad Newberry for tuition reimbursement. And approve the claims list as present the amount of three hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hyatt Meyer?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Motion carried. Staff reports. Dan?
I have a couple things. Uh, uh, six or seven years ago, we bought a used, uh, wood chipper because we had so many trees to take down. Well, the, it broke down. It's gonna cost, we, we paid eighteen thousand when we bought the used one. It's gonna cost eight thousand to fix this one. Um, and to, to replace it with another used ones, like twenty-nine thousand. And before we bought that one, we rented one for three hundred and twenty-five dollars a day when we rented it. But Mike is pretty well caught up with trees at this moment. So, um, I, I, my, I'm leaning towards just hanging out, letting it, if we need one, we'll rent it. But, um, since we're caught up, we might, we probably won't need one. And we can make this decision maybe a year from now or at budget time if we want to do something with it. Mike will just kind of put it back together and stick it in its spot and wait. He doesn't have that much to do and, you know, we get another tree disease and then we could discuss it. But, um, for right now, I think he's thinking he doesn't really need it at the moment. So, um, just letting it sit probably makes some sense. Um, second thing, as I alluded to, we've got a couple quotes to seal manholes to help us with the I and I problem. Um, they're coming in, well, they're pretty darn close together. One was nineteen thousand and eighty dollars and the other one, the low bid is eighteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-two. We should have that money in the sewer fund and that should help us out with the I and I going forward. So, uh, with that and all the ones we did ourselves, that should really cut down on the amount of stormwater we're getting in the plant. So, um, we'll get, we'll get this, the, we just got the second quote today or yesterday. So, um, we'll have this for a formal approval for you guys at next meeting most likely.
You have a question, Andy?
Yeah. What year did we buy that wood chipper?
What did we say? Thirteen?
Twenty thirteen.
Twenty thirteen.
But it was already a used one. Like it was a two thousand eight.
It was a two thousand eight chipper. We bought it in twenty thirteen. It was, we bought it from Altorfer's, the place that rents them after they rent them out for a few years and then they sell their used equipment.
Okay. Thanks.
Anybody have anything for Dan? Mike's not here. Jesse, what are you got going on?
Tyler did start the academy this week. Um, he will be here through July. And then after July fourth, the weekend, he'll go to, uh, report to the academy. So he's in here every day in front of the computer doing his classes that way. Um, it worked out pretty good for Shane and Brandon to finish out their academy. Um, his graduation's in the middle of September. I think it's on a Wednesday this year instead of a typical Friday. But we'll get that out in plenty of time for everybody. Um, I think it's a non-council night, so we shouldn't have any issues with that. Um, proud of our citizens, like I was talking to Councilwoman Christie before the meeting. Uh, the last couple of days, we had no issues and I just want to thank everybody for behaving themselves. Uh, Burlington had to rally last night. I didn't hear of any major issues down there, um, with anybody. So, um, with everything that's going on, I just want to thank everybody for sticking by our sides and going forward from here.
Got any idea what, um, Ringo wants to do with their graduation?
They, uh, can't.
Oh, it's canceled.
Yeah.
I mean, does he maybe want to do something in the fall?
I, I'll talk to Ringo about that. Officer Covert about that. Cause I was thinking I want, since I'm the Darren instructor over at Notre Dame, I still want to, they, they got through what they needed to, to classify that they got enough lessons in. Um, both schools, we're in week eight and we have to get past week seven and they'll accept that as a graduation. So I, I would like to do something and maybe in the fall, if it's all right with the schools and go up to the, um, sixth grade up there in the junior high and just congratulate them and, and go that route. So I'll talk to Officer Covert about that and see.
Okay.
But yeah, it sounds like a good idea.
Thanks. Anybody have anything for Jess? All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. Sean sent out an email to everybody. Had a chance to read that. Got any questions? Uh, let Dan know and he can talk with Sean tomorrow. Kelly, you got anything going on? Leslie? Um, Kathy?
No.
Andy? Joyce? Reese?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, the other, the other thing you see on the community reports, um, I was contacted by Ron Camp here, oh, yesterday. And then also a couple of weeks ago, I think he, he called. And, um, I had Kelly put this on the agenda, but we don't need to take any action or anything on it tonight. I just wanted to give you a little bit of information of what he was talking about. He's looking at, uh, a community block grant for the community health center to do some upgrading for the dental office and also for, uh, personal protective equipment for the fall for staff. And there's money available for that from the state. But to get the grant, it has to, the paperwork has to come through either the city or the county. And, uh, he doesn't know for sure yet either. Yesterday when I was talking to him, whether the, the money comes to the city, the grant money comes to the city and it is dispersed to, uh, community health center or whether the city puts out the money first and then gets reimbursed from the state. So I told him to be here in a couple of weeks and explain the whole process to you. I was hoping to get some more information. They were going to send information from the state to Kelly, but we never got anything today. So with that, anyone wishing to address council matters that are not on the agenda tonight from the community? No old business, new business. Item number one is consider resolution awarding bid for the 2020 Houston street improvement projects. Uh, we received two bids. One was from WL Miller for three hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-six cents. And the low bid came from Norris for three hundred and twenty thousand, eighty-two dollars and sixty cents. And Matt's here if you got any questions.
How long do you think that'll take to do it?
The asphalt work will just take probably not even a week. It's just a matter of patching. We've got to set up what they can only do, they've got to stagger one lane blocks. So it'll probably be four to six weeks of patching, give or take.
Just why they stagger it. And then they'll come back hopefully following sidewalks.
Okay.
And when are we thinking about starting this one?
We won't know until we get a contract put down.
Okay. Any, any kind of guess earliest date it would be?
The earliest, I'm guessing it'll probably take two to three weeks to get contracts put together. So that would be absolute soonest. But it depends upon, you know, the contractor's schedules and how it fits into the third year.
I think, is Norris doing, uh, North Gear for the county?
I don't know that for sure.
Think they are.
I, I think, I think that's accurate.
So they'd be in town pretty mu, you know, already. They wouldn't have to mobilize too much.
The completion date's October thirty-first, so.
Correct. But if plans change with the Fourth of July parade or anything like that, I'm sure we could work with folks if that becomes.
Either you were pricey or they were cheap, but I appreciate the, the lower bid.
If you look at the bid tab, it really came down to like three items. It was the concrete patching and really the curb and gutter units were the, were the main ones where the prices were there. Those are always difficult to kind of guess just because they're labor intensive with small pieces of concrete. So use some DOT averages and it's really depends upon which contractors needing that type of work. The good thing about it for a contractor side, it's really good fielding work. So if it's raining somewhere else, you can pop in and, you know, work for a week because you're working right off the pavement.
Okay. Motion to approve. Support. Motionless support. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Hyatt Meyer?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number two is consider resolution of support for a workforce housing tax credit application.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motionless support. Any discussion?
No, I just want to say I, I like these kind of programs because it's something we can give out to basically any developer. Um, it's not just one big chunk of money for one deal. So something like this fits in worth what I'm interested in.
Roll call.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Hyatt Meyer?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number three is to consider alternatives for 2020 pool season. Dan, you want to take it away?
Um, I sent you out the information. I got a, a email from the YMCA's finance manager. Um, they're recommending their, uh, alternative number one to, to stay closed this season and go with our same contract and deal next year is their number one. And then number two is they, uh, we open when allowed and able, which may be July first. May not be, it's hard to say with, since the governor hasn't really even opened it other than, than lap swimming at this point. Um, and, and in, in addition to our thirty thousand dollar payment, they'd want some guarantee that they wouldn't lose. Um, they've been typically losing about five thousand dollars a year. So I would think you can negotiate that that number is their bottom of what they would lose. Uh, I don't know that. That would be a negotiation with them on exactly what they're thinking. But, uh, and then their number three is to exit the contract. And if we can't come to an agreement and, uh, which, that wouldn't be good for either of us, I don't think. I think, uh, as I said in my memo, I think, uh, keeping it closed this year, although that, you know, not ideal, but it would save us sixty or seventy thousand dollars this year.
Dan, any discussion on, you know, if we decide to go with option one tonight? And we're looking at data July first and it looks like, hey, we could open for the next month and a half. Any discussions of, hey, we could come back and talk about this again?
Um, I can check with them. I, I, you read the email that I got. I didn't respond to, to negotiate further. I kind of had to hear from what, where you guys were leaning, but I guess any, I mean, possibly, I don't know where. They do their own math and this is from the finance person. So I don't know what, if they have a drop dead date or if this is what the board said was the final thing. I, I can gather that information. It's, I mean, I guess. It all kind of depends on, I, I think it doesn't make any sense if all you get is lap swimming and swimming lessons. And that's all we have so far. Uh, like I said, about half the cities I've talked to are just not doing it this year. And, you know, because for the same reasons, it, with just that short of a season, they're talking about maybe over, they're allowing schools to open a couple of weeks early. Typically soon as the first day of school, you get no business. They, people stop coming. I, no matter how hot it is. And all other cities kind of went that way, that they closed their pool season the first day, the weekend before the first day of school because they can't make ends meet at that point because you don't get enough, you don't get enough customers as soon as, as soon as everybody gets into back to school mode, they quit going to the pool.
How about the equipment at the pool? I know the, the years I spent at Fund City, anytime we had equipment that wasn't used for some time, the next year when we started it back up, we always had a lot of equipment issues and malfunctions. There's been talk with Public Works about, you know, do we start things up, fill it up, fill it up halfway, run water through it?
Um, Mike, just at the end of last year, we rebuilt a lot of stuff before this season to have it, to have it ready. Some of the stuff that we've had trouble with. Um, so I, I mean, I don't think that's a, an issue, but, I mean, they have to drain the, there's some crappy green water down the deep end that they're going to have to drain out anyway at some point. So I don't know if starting the, the pumps make any sense. I have to discuss that with Mike. But he didn't indicate in our discussions that, uh, it was going to be a problem. He, he's lean, he just, his guy, him and his guys would just assume keep it closed this year is his opinion. And that, that sixty to seventy thousand dollars would be better spent elsewhere is his opinion that he expressed to me today.
My opinion is, um, I would lean toward waiting until July first to see. I, it doesn't look like probably the governor will say, open up pools for regular swimming. But in case that would happen, I would like to be able to do it. I realize we'd be losing money. But I think one of the important, uh, functions of a city is to provide services for the people. And I know one of our most popular ones for the kids is the pool. And they haven't been able to do anything for months already. And if that pool could possibly open, I would love to see it open.
If we wait till the first, he said it would take three weeks to get it ready, cleaned and ready. They'd only be open for about two, three weeks then.
Well, I thought they said it would take a week to get it ready.
Three, I thought he said.
About two weeks.
Two weeks or whatever.
Okay.
At the most.
At the most, I, I think they said like a week to a week and a half. Well, two weeks at the most. Even if it's only open for a short time, I know that there'd be a lot of kids and families that would be super happy to spend part of July and August in the pool.
The other issue that the other cities have been running into is they're wondering if they're going to be able to hire guards. And they're thinking if it gets too late in the summer, that that's not going to happen. And so we could have all the best intentions of opening July first. If the Y can't hire guards, we can't open.
But we won't know that until the time comes.
Well, and the other thing is that are we going to have restrictions on, on how many kids can be in the pool at the same time?
I would guess it'd be half capacity and six foot, or three foot distancing and all that. And extra sanitation and extra, some of the cities that, that are thinking about opening have come back with procedures of hiring extra people just to wipe down and sanitize stuff. And, uh, I'm sure that's, that's in with the wise decision that, that they just assume not is because they have to be responsible for all that too. And, uh, I don't know.
So there's going to be extra cost?
There's going to be extra cost and less people.
Yeah. I, I, I would be okay with, uh, alternative number one myself. I mean, the short period that we might open it and with the circumstances the way they are, I don't see any sense in losing money when we're tight already.
I mean, if the Y opens it for a day, we pay them thirty thousand dollars according to our contract.
The Y will continue to have like swim lessons and stuff though at the Y.
At the Y.
I'm sorry, Kelly. I didn't hear what you said.
I was just, I was asking if the Y was going to continue to have swimming lessons, but they'll have them at, at the Y will be indoors. But at least there will be an opportunity for lessons.
I belong to the, uh, Iowa Mayor, Mayor's Association. And that's one of the questions that's been going around the last couple of weeks to different mayors. And you get all kinds of different responses from, you know, larger communities and ours that they're possibly going to try to open. And also a call like Bettendorf, they said they weren't going to open, uh, to smaller communities, you know, that where you have maybe a thousand or two thousand population that, that is the only thing that can do, they can, you know, for the summer entertainment for the kids. But the majority of them are saying that they're, they're not going to open it, you know, at all. But the thing is, under the best, uh, circumstances, a normal season is about eighty-five days. And if we were to open, uh, even if we got the pool ready starting tomorrow and we could open by the fourteenth of June, we're only talking about, you know, fifty-eight days at the most for being open. And to me, the biggest thing is, does the Y have lifeguards? I mean, you can have, you can have all the best intentions of it over there and if you don't have lifeguards, you can't do anything.
Well, I guess also in my memo, I made the point that I, you know, I don't know if it's a good idea just for public health reasons. Even though you do all those things, you know, kids aren't going to abide by all of that. Do we want to be responsible for gathering a bunch of kids together even though that's what they want to do?
I think also it would, uh, cause more chaos than what we already have during the summer. Trying to keep social distancing and even more, be more chaotic. We have to hire more people.
But I'd agree with agreeing to close at this point in time. And then if things change, I'd like to go to back, back to them with a proposal. But I think we want out of our current contract for this year.
Yeah, if they don't, I mean, if they don't open it, we're not going to be paying them anything.
Yeah, right.
That kind of consensus and.
Kathy, you're not saying you think we should keep current contract. You're saying if we can't open, you'd like to open.
I have my rose colored glasses on that the governor will say, you know, July first, everything's fine, everybody can go swimming. But I agree that, you know, if we still have to social distance and all that, there's no way you can get a bunch of kids in there. But if they're, I guess I'm saying we can just go ahead and say no. And if in the meantime, it, things could turn around. We never, we don't know from day to day right now what's going to happen next. Maybe the next thing they're going to say, oh, it's okay to go swimming. I don't know. So if that should happen, I would love to be able to by July first say, go back to the Y and say, will you go ahead and do this for the rest of the year?
If they were allowed to open with no restrictions, they might have a different opinion. Because I think everybody's thinking that they're going to be allowed to open at some point, but they're going to be under restrictions because everything else has been.
Right. Uh, yeah. And that would be super difficult, but, I mean, we don't know what's going to happen. Maybe they'll say it's okay.
Some of those mayors that responded, they're, they're putting restrictions on like for only their residents and only with, uh, passes, you know, nobody taking money to handle money, no concessions, anything like that. So.
Well, I would be fine with just saying, let's, let's not renew the contract now and see if the Y would be amenable to or agreeable to, um, if some great thing happened between now and July first and we could open the pool and everyone could swim like they used to, then maybe they would do it.
Dan, are you looking for an official motion?
Well, I should have, yeah, I should have, uh.
We have, we had something called, I think, but we, Mike's to have an answer for that. I'm going to be doing a newsletter here.
Look, grab the microphone.
I, I mean, I think everybody agrees, uh, ideally, we would like to have it open. But I, you know, if I wear my fiscally responsible hat, I just don't see where it works. And apparently their finance manager thinks the same thing. So, yeah, something, yeah, something drastic could change and we can talk about it. But it, you know, I, I, this, uh, contract between us and them has been very beneficial for both of us. Our, our finance people don't have to deal with hiring twenty-five, thirty kids and, um, worrying about making sure you got people to work and all of that. And it certainly helps and, and swimming and all that's their, that's their deal. That's their, that's their ballgame. They, you know, they know how to do it. So it's been very beneficial. And, um, I think we might've been the second city in the state to do this and now there's been several more. Add on to, it's proven to be a very good partnership between cities and the Ys, if you're lucky enough to have one in the community.
Is there a stated capacity for our pool?
Yeah. What did they say it was? Seven hundred and something, which seems like it's a lot.
You said six hundred and forty-eight.
Six hundred, six eighty is what, I went and looked at the sign, but I forget what I said. Six eighty. I.
I mean, they'd have to be shoulder to shoulder.
I would, yeah. Definitely not six feet apart at six eighty.
No. We don't want to lose them for next year. We know that.
But I guess my question was, are you looking for head nods or do you, do you want a formal vote tonight?
Uh, voice vote or whatever would be i- ideal because it's nice to get that direction.
Well, I will make the motion for option number one, mutually agreeing to close the pool for this year, but staying in partnership for 2021.
Support.
Okay. Motionless support. Any other discussion?
Well, I would still like to say to keep it open in case we can possibly open it later.
I'll discuss that if, you know, if it get, if they can open without restrictions, they may have a different opinion.
Okay.
It has to work for them and their people and their finances too. So.
Okay.
Always come back and vote again, different, differently.
Yeah, I.
Yeah, that's my intention of this too, is let's end this current contract for this year and make sure we're not paying out the thirty thousand dollars. And then if we want to revisit, we can.
Okay. Support.
Okay. Roll call.
Please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Hyatt Meyer?
Aye.
Motion carried. Oh, let's see. Item number four is to consider payment of Jones contracting for work completed on the Gear Avenue Trail project in the amount of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and sixteen cents.
Motion approved.
Support.
Motionless support. Any discussion?
I just want to say this really looks nice out there. I think the trail's a great thing. I'd like to find some way to continue that on down and be able to get from West Burlington proper here out to there a little safer and better, uh, through the mall area at some point in time.
Yeah, that, crossing Highway thirty-four gets really expensive, but that's something we can explore if they ever, is some sort of a grant that will pay for, uh, some sort of a walkway or something. Cause actually the, the, the sidewalk over the bridge even is too narrow. Not that you couldn't, you know, have a pretty wide sidewalk up to the bridge and then have everybody walk bikes across that. It wouldn't be ideal, but replacing a bridge over Highway thirty-four would be ridiculously expensive. So.
Yeah. Right now, if you're coming from the school area, our, our school area, heading out towards SCC, once you hit that backside of the mall, there's no sidewalks through there at all. And then turning on, heading up south on Gear, there's nothing right there either. So you see a lot of people walking that direction, especially when school is back in session.
That ditch there between the mall entrance and the bridge is really not much, not very wide. But that'd be more doable than doing something with a bridge. So, um, I think in the, in the pedestrian trail plan that you're going to get presented again, maybe next week to look at, I think that's in there, future plan to do something like that. Um, that's pending grants and what, whatever. But it is in the countywide trail plan that they're putting together is that connection is in there.
Yep.
Okay. Roll call.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Hyatt Meyer?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number. I have number five is consider payment French Renniker for engineering service related to the following projects. Twenty twenty Houston Street Improvement Project and Wheeler Street Ballard Pen and Curve Repair Project.
Motion to approve both payments?
Support.
Motionless support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Motion carried. I have number six is consider final reading of ordinance setting sewer rates for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. And those rates would be going from a, a minimum of nine seventy per user and the monthly meter rate is ten sixty-one per thousand gallons and capital project is a dollar per user unit.
Still move?
Support.
There's a motionless support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Aye.
I have number eight is to consider the final reading of ordinance setting, setting the recycling rates, I'm sorry, I have number seven. Consider final reading of ordinance setting the water rates for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. And those rates would be, we budgeted a seventy-five cent per thousand increase. The monthly distribution charge would be go from twenty-two dollars to twenty-four, twenty-five. The first three thousand gallons, there's no charge with the payment of the monthly distribution charge. Three thousand to a million gallons per month would go from seven sixty-five to eight forty per thousand. The next five hundred thousand would go from five thirty-nine to six fourteen per thousand. And all water over a million, five hundred thousand and one gallons would go from three forty-four per thousand to four nineteen per thousand.
Motion approved.
Support.
Motionless support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Motion carried. Now, I have number eight is consider final reading of ordinance setting recycling rates for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And recycling rate would go from three eighty-five to, per month to three ninety-five per month.
Motion approved.
Support.
Motionless support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Lees?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carried. I have number nine is consider resolution setting a public hearing date for the state revolving loan fund and to make the contents of an environmental information document for the South Lift Station replacement project. We would publish on June eleventh and have the public hearing on July fifteenth.
It has to be an extra long.
It's a thirty day notice.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motionless support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Motion carried. Anyone wishing to address the council matters we did discuss or didn't discuss tonight? Do you guys have anything extra? I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.